We also have in our mix Mrs Maria Ife. She is right behind this venue, this evening. We really appreciate the support and this effort. Mrs Maria Ife is the Vice President of Nenu. So we really appreciate your presence. Mrs Ife, believe me sir. So ifo community chairman. Okay, as soon as he comes in, we will recognize him. So thank you very much for your patience and thank you for being with us. And we know that it is time for us to contribute back for all those corrupt politicians. And we know that nothing good comes easy. And nothing tried, nothing gained, nothing ventured, nothing moved. So if we don't start trying, making efforts to take the country back, it is very difficult for us to move the country forward. Since I was young, I always believed that the future of the country belongs to the youth. So this is what I used to hear. But till now, I have not seen any difference. Have you seen the diagram? We still have the same type of leader. I have been leading this since I was in primary school till now. So it is time for us to tell them that enough is enough. Okay, even the rebels that they should have used and do a re-interpret and turn Nigeria into what it's supposed to be, to be competitive in part of this in the world. Today, Nigeria is not moving forward. We rather, we are moving backward. We have other resources that most of the countries in the world do not have, but we are still the most poorest country in the world. I'm not a politician, but I like to break up with people who really have plans, dreams, people who are willing to sacrifice for the country. I know some of whom used to tell me that Nigerians are all coward. Well, not coward, but just that when you stand up and you look back, there is no one behind you to support you, to face the struggle. You look back, then you have to go back. For this time around, we have someone that says, guys, enough is enough. I'm ready to sacrifice myself. I'm ready to stand in front of you. I'm ready to lead. You just stand behind me. Give me the ovation and I will deliver. Okay, and this person, he has been an activist right from when he was in high school. Okay, because a lot of people keep asking me, this guy is not a politician, he has never managed any position. How do you think this guy is going to deliver? How do you think he's going to perform? Now say this, we are all born in college or we're not in college, talented. This guy is born in a different way. He's selected right from childhood. He has been selected to be a leader. So he has been gifted, he has been leading, he has been a student, he was an activist right from when he was in high school, when he was in university. So I'm right there next to him and would make him to say, okay, today with this generation, I'm going to lead Nigeria. And people were asking me, why didn't he start from local level? You see, and the answer is very simple. When you have a big problem, you don't start solving a big problem from small problem. You start from the top so that you can able to solve the problem. So this is why he started from the top. And today I'm pleading your support. Let us support him. Let us give him the mandate. I am very confident that he will not betray us. He's not this kind of politician that when he gets a hassle off, he'll start calling his telephone number, it will go on voice mail. This is not the kind of person. Okay, this is a person that has been tested in so many branches, in so many ways. So this person has, he is a democracy activist. He is the owner of Sahara Reporters. And he has been using this platform in communication to Nigerians, opening all the channels of all these corrupt politicians, making us to know some of the hidden things that are being done by the conservatives. So today, I would appreciate you guys to give us the honour in welcoming the AAC share person and he is the AAC president. Okay, the person of... So with this, we go straight to the second agenda, we have our agenda. That's it. The second one is the conservation, the master plan of what AAC have for Nigeria. They have a manifesto and they have 10 points on the manifesto that says that if AAC becomes the leader of the country today, these four points, our future president is here today to, you know, to give us a dead focus on what he is going to do if he becomes the president. He contested, okay, we understand how the game goes in the country. But this time around, we are starting very early because elders used to say when the young child falls down, he looks forward. But when the adult falls, he looks back. Why is he looking back? Just to look the cost of his falling. So we have identified the reason why we are able to, you know, to capture the power this time around. This is why we are starting very early to correct those mistakes so that we can take it back from those money-back politicians. So the third point is the purpose of the meeting. The purpose of the meeting tonight for us to recognize him and for him to recognize us. He has been hearing about Athens. So a lot of people have been telling him, Athens, we are in the village. Unfortunately, when he came here today, he was, wow, this beautiful city. Our great history, oh, we're borrowing their money, look at what they have. I said to him, good, why we are taking your route Athens, Greece? For you, when you get there, you know what we decide. You know what Nigerians are aiming for. So that you don't tell us, oh, we don't have the resources, or we don't have the money. We don't want the same excuses. So we really appreciate that he is going to deliver. He's going to do what has proven so far. So the fourth point is he's going to give us the presentation. He's going to discuss with us on the manifestos of AAC, the plan, the agenda, how we are going to execute, then the next plan, the next action plan, and our next plan of action. So with due respect, sir, we are welcoming you on stage. So you can present yourself.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. This is very short notice. We're supposed to be here in January 2019, before the presidential of Nigerian election. But we were so swamped, we couldn't make it to Greece, Athens. But we saw the two guys and from what we are hearing from you today, it's obvious that you've been prepared for months. It just happened that we're going to shore. But when I was invited to the editors forum in Athens, I decided to contact Venus to let him know that I've been, it's possible to have a gathering like this. So thank you for everything that you did and also to present to you still that the country of Nigeria is in need of your support, help, and as you love to say, prayers. And I came into town, did my presentation yesterday. And I've been very fortunate to see this city and see Greece. When I heard about Greece last time, I heard about an economic meltdown. So I was hoping that when I reached Greece this time around, I would find better people here in front of ATMs, poor scarcity, and those things that are associated with economic meltdown in Nigeria. I'm not saying it's simple, there's a... I was told instantly that here in this... Yes, I was told instantly that here in Greece, you have free medical care, free education, and there's a welfare program for the elite in Greece. And I was told that Greece has got no oil. Yes, not, not really much. So I'll put it this way, I have been humbled since I arrived here. And standing in front of you today, I don't want to sound religious, but remember that Paul came to Greece called Corrus. And when he came, they asked him, you know, what are you going to tell us that is new? Because you've been repeating the same thing all over, all these years. Now, Paul wasn't very happy because he had gone to Athens and they treated him bad. So, but when, at that point, he decided that regardless of the threat, he would not leave Corrus. And I think one of the biggest churches I viewed in memory was built in Corrus. I say that because of the way Nigeria is. Anytime you read Nigerians, as Vince told you, they will ask you, what is it that you have for us to need? Do you have money? Do you have lands? Do you have anything to promise us in the future? And even when you tell them that there's something bigger for the future, they will still want, in some cases, instantaneous ratification. And this is not only the youths that are doing it, older people are doing it. So you guys will point to where, just like Paul, you might get, you might want to get discouraged about Nigeria. This is the experience we had this last election. But because of the fact that this is a country of 200 million people, very important, not only to the future of Nigeria, but the African continent, we must not give up. So the story I'm bringing you here today is the story of hope. As an encouragement that you should not give up, regardless of what you are hearing, you know, part of what you hear when people say to you, oh, go and start from local government, state government or senate, it is the mental conditioning of oppression. It's just like in the days of slavery. Slaves were meant to believe that the slaves that were in the garden was inferior to the ones inside the house until everybody became free. It wasn't that they knew that slavery was slavery, there was no category. It's certain with Nigeria, the way our people have been battered over the years, they are mentally conditioned to be questioned even their own humanity and competence to lead a nation. Because leaders always keep telling you, you are not good. And it's just like if you're a parent and you keep telling your children they are not good, they might internalize that feeling that they are not good. So when you hear that from people, don't blame them. It's the best they can think of when there's so much confusion. And there is no country in the world that I've seen the kind of political, economic, social, and cultural confusion like Nigeria. And I've travelled pretty extensively, including coming here to Greece, where I thought with the different conditions, only to be surprised and be shamed. You know, I told them to drop me and I would just let I can rest. You know, it's my own way of just reconditioning myself to say, wow, I can't believe Greece of all places. It's great. And I called home and I posted some of my updates and people say, you know, are there Nigerians in Greece? Because they thought it's a poor place and not only places where people are doing well. And I said, the people here are even living better than some of the European countries and American states that I know, content with their condition and situation. Because Greece is like for them the secret that they discover about humanity. But we can't be talking about where things are good. We have to start talking about where things are in chance and that's Nigeria. So you guys knew that I ran the last election. Today, on my way here, the European Union released a report, if you guys have gotten any apart, that Nigerian election was not transparent. I said, well, you guys are trying to decorate this with language. There's nothing like, there was no election in 2019. What they did was they started a process where the elections did not, they did not go on a polling unit. They had the coalition centers. That's where they sat down, you know, did all the divides and... They beat people off on the street, they used soldiers, they might feel the soldiers came and tried to attack me. This was videotaped. There's not soldiers everywhere. There was serious harassment. According to the EU, they killed 58 people in this last election. It was not an election, it was an act of aggression against Nigerian voters. So, but you know, all these EU people, they are also part of the problem because they never tell the truth. Even when it's very, instead of them to use the proper language, this is... This last election did not happen. Bouharin Mehan Lea, he allocated goals to himself and brought himself back into power with that election. That would have been a honest way to deal with it. But that's diplomacy. We cannot afford that kind of diplomacy that is damaging to our humanity in Nigeria. And I've told them, everybody had cared to listen to me, that no election happened in 2019. Because nobody wants to ask me why they didn't win. It cannot win when there's no election. I contested for the election. The other operators did not contest. So nobody won the election because there was no election. You cannot go to a full-blown competition that's popular with the soccer games and claim that somebody won when there was no pick-up, there was no halftime, there was no extra time. In fact, the referee joined the main team. And while the other team was nothing, the referee had already blown that the game was over. And allocated when there was no game and there was no match. That's what happened in Nigerian election. I was glad that somehow the EU tongue-in-cheek came out and said that. They said, I don't see anything new. But we, in this last election, showed to our people at home that something different could be done. It's the reason I didn't miss, I mean, I didn't miss words. When I got to Nigeria and started talking about what needs to happen in Nigeria. We were about the agenda that we had. Everybody in Nigeria after the election said, you guys had the best agenda you can imagine. You are very clear about how you want to address the pollution, electricity, how you want to address corruption, how you want to address health, agriculture. In fact, after we left, after they handled their selection, not election, people are now reaching out to us and saying, we regret that we didn't vote for you. But as some of our people, I said, no, no, you didn't vote for us, sorry. Now the people you voted for, they have established a portal for next level. Enjoy it, you know. But I don't belong in that category because a lot of people could not even go out to vote because they were already intimidated. If you guys remember, President Bouharin declared they should assign order. He did before they should. So a lot of people, look at this, it's not even worth it to man die for in one election. When the president of the country had already ordered the army to shoot anybody outside. And that was exactly what the army did. They were all over the place, zombies, running, jaro-jaro, as fella would say. When I confronted, they were ready to shoot, you guys saw it on the video. So I said, look, I am not going to be intimidated, this is my... Today, they have possession of my drone that I use in monitoring the election. The Nigerian coastal six, four of our drones that were brought into the country to monitor the election. Because they knew that we would be able to capture electronically some of reading that happened. And a lot of people did have evidence of reading that happened. But it doesn't matter anymore in Nigeria. So while we finish the election, we change our tone a little bit. If you have heard about it, we say revolution now. The reason is that except there is some form of revolution in Nigeria, even an election can never happen again. If there's no upkeep, a shake-up of system, you are not going to see this people relinquish power. Anybody in their right mind who is deceiving him or herself that people who are in power today will relinquish power, they are wasting their time. The nature of power, power is the only vehicle that has ever been designed without a reverse gear, except to see superior power. And the only superior power that Nigeria needs to exhibit is people's power. And in coming to you today, I want you to understand that we can make it happen. There is no reason why anybody should give up hope on Nigeria. The reason is that the people that are in power are in a minority. In fact, the people that have been in power in Nigeria have always been in a minority. Nigeria since 1960 has been managed by the same set of people. This Bouharin, you are saying, he was around in 1960. Obasanjo, they were around in 1960. Yes, they were the most who forced Nigerians to do war. Killed as many as 2 million people. Went and start producing politically, left, right, and center. Every time Nigeria had a chance to move in the right direction, they would come out, jump out of the bush and move it in the wrong direction. That is why in 2019, Obasanjo was recommended that Tico, who he had written about in his book. The French terrorist called that Tico a bastard, called him a thief, called him a savant and a traitor. And then he jumped out of the bush in 2019 and said that Tico is the only one who can save Nigeria. The reason is that these leaders are only about their own personal interests. They are not interested in you, they are not interested in me, they are not interested in the future of our children. Some of them are even so wicked, they are not interested in the future of their own children. You know, and it was part of the reason, I apologize if I'm not speaking exactly how you expect, like, you know, the order, because I'm really disappointed sometimes. I speak out of, you know, my heart. It's part of the reason I refuse to visit any of the past leaders during the election. Even though people were encouraging us, we just don't have paid diplomas. I said, how do I go in front of Obasanjo if you ask? Do I see him and say, I value you at the best? And then I pushed him forward. It's not possible. You know, if I don't come to people, I will be forced to slip my mind and say, you destroyed this country's heart and you don't deserve to be free. And people said to me, oh, don't say that you be jailed then because they will gamble against you. No, they need to know what you have exactly to them, where the right people win elections. If you go into meetings with them, you have national conversation with them and give them assurances that gives them the impression that the next generation of Nigeria or Nigerians will be ruled by them remotely. They would take that as an oath. I will not go into a boat with people who destroyed my past when I know that we need to guarantee a better future for our children. So, and that was almost a driving force behind our campaign. It was the reason why we were only accepted, even though initially people didn't understand who we were. And people kept saying, we don't know you, we don't know you. But let me tell you, when they say they don't know you in Nigeria, it's a coded word for... Yes. And this is one of the things we bear from, we don't know him now, look to him. It's a very coded word. Because we were actually well-known because our campaign was most prominent in Nigeria. We travelled everywhere. We travelled to 4 states and we went to so many states more than twice. So nobody didn't know us. In fact, after the election, when individual people said they didn't know me, I said, ah, you know, that should be... Who should know? You know, the best president you never have, you know, things like that. I don't know whether they make fun of me or themselves, but regardless, they now come out of home, they said they know us. And some of them can even tell you everything you said because they kept watching all of these videos that they were saying. And so many of them said them, they shared it extensively with their families, their children. They know us, they know our ideas. But again, what I spoke about earlier about mental conditioning, people have the condition to do that. Nigeria can never be okay again, let them just do whatever they can do, they get 5,000. But 5,000 now is over, they finished spending it. And next level has become the next level of fraud. It has become the next level of killings. It has become the next level of domination. It has become the next level of nepotism. It has become the next level of incompetence and a general next level of wickedness. I said it before the election, there's things that Bouharin could not implement the last four years because it was pretending. He will come out now without inhibition to do it. It depends on what one of all is. I'm actually not after the leaders, but there is a desire now to hold Nigeria by the jugular. And people better be prepared for it. I was interviewed on BBC or RAS service. And I said to them, you know, RAC or something, person, in which it came or with, I said, everybody should lay out their backs because if you get to everybody, this Bouharin is second time. We have not even started the second time yet. The country is willing in ends. The country is giving in its territory, hunger, starvation. Name is, in the history of Nigeria, the level of migration outside of the country in the last few years that we have witnessed is unprecedented. Even people who won election in this last election in Nigeria, they are writing migration example, migrate to Canada. Yes. Senators, House of Red members, they are simply writing example to get Canadian citizenship while they are in the national assembly and the state assembly. We are not making these things up, that's how bad things are. If people who are in government do not trust their country well enough, they don't trust the citizenship of the country well enough to stay this for better for worse soon, that's what happens to the regular poor people. But what we are here to do is not a lamentation that we all know about. I'm actually here to bring to you, thank you for what you do and the fact that you held on to his faith and belief in us. Even though we couldn't make it to Greece last time. But also to get all prepared for the challenges ahead. I don't want to deceive you that I will not be challenging in the next four years. I don't want to deceive you that even me that am standing in front of you now, that they will tolerate me the way they tolerated me in the last election. Because one of the things why they tolerated us so much during that time was that they thought we would retire very quickly and we would crash out. Only to find out that we are very resilient and resistant. Now, they have gone back to their drawing boards. But probably some of you that have heard that already, they are trying to hijack the party from us. They raised some of the guys that we used to work with, they've been to court, you know, to get all those papers that has to get from the backyard. And before we do this, all over the place, they said, we are no longer in charge of the party that we created ourselves. But the good news about it is that, if the party is so attracted, attractive to them, that is the only party they are interested in out of 91 parties that contested last election. I'm happy about it. We didn't take one before they came after, the APC went after our party during the river selection. Without any imposition, they adopted our candidates, got involved with the guys there. We rejected in the refuge. After that, they went after the party, hijacked it, said that some new executives are now in charge of the party, went to court before we would say to our prophecy they had obtained a court order, saying that the leaders of the party should not represent the party anymore. This is a party we created after, brand new from you now. This is the party that all of you contributed to. The reason was that we did some things that have never been done before. For the first time in history of Nigeria, the presidential candidate accounted for how much money he raised and how he was spent. That's what we did. The big parties not tell you how much they raised and how much they spent. There's no accountability and they didn't like that because you present a new challenge of accountability and transparency to them. They are used to doing things in the quick way they do things. Secondly, they saw that even the ideas that were posed to our people, that were spoused during the election, lived even more potentially after the election. You guys heard the ridiculous thing that Ondo State government went to do in Thailand. We go and learn how to grow wheat in Thailand. They are already growing cannabis in Ondo State since I was not born. Why do you need to go to Thailand? But they are doing it because there was an idea we brought, but they didn't want to give us the credit for their idea, so they found the little money that in the state, travelled to Thailand and went and learned how to smoke it. They were smoking emotes. There was something I read a few days ago about, you know, there was an excavation, archaeological excavation done from a pregnant woman that was built from 3,000 years ago. They found traces of cannabis inside the baby. So they have been using cannabis for medicine for a long time. And that's what we said, but what we said in the election, what did they say? They started making fun of us. Ah, these guys are weed exporters, they want to export weed. They have no idea that, we are not talking about smoking weed, which is being done already in Nigeria. We are talking about how to monetize a lucrative business for medicinal reasons. Now, the government carried itself to go to Thailand just to waste the little money that we used to pay for cannabis. You heard about Minong Beach? It was our idea.
Yeah, yeah.
But they couldn't pay even the ones that we proposed, they are paying thirty thousand. But we tell our people that you deserve hundred thousand and thirty minimum wage. The reason is simple. There's no way a senator or president and his wife should be collecting maximum wage. And you that goes to work every day should not be collecting minimum wage of hundred thousand. A senator in Nigeria receives fourteen million naira per month. A worker in Nigeria who has been working nine p.m. to five p.m. receives thirty thousand. Thirty thousand divided by fourteen million, you go and do the calculation. If you are receiving thirty thousand, uh, naira by month, you take that seven years of there. To receive fourteen million naira, which is a moderate salary for a resident. There were another argument, the economist that moved in and ran around, say, ah, sure, I say something that will cause inflation. I took them to the cleaners. Why is it that the money is still every year at the cost of inflation? Yes, after the election, we detected that the central bank of Nigeria, four or five people there stole five hundred billion naira. They were discussing it on the telephone with God, the audio. They first of all wanted to deny it, but they knew they were dealing with, that I have already done my homework, which is voice recognition homework. They had to agree to it, but they said it was a different conversation that they had. Imagine what five hundred billion naira could have done in the life of Nigerians? In terms of providing free education, healthcare, completing several rules that are completed. I don't want to take you into the conversation about rules, I traveled in Nigeria during the election everywhere. So many of you were praying for me, anytime you see me in Gobbe, Akamawa, Taraba, like, what is this guy doing, is he crazy? I went to see Nigeria for what it is, that's why I did all those trips. Nigeria is on government territory, Nigeria has no governments, I'm sorry to say.
You're sorry to say that.
I'm telling you, some of those roads have not been touched in twenty, forty years. They have tried to construct, I mean not construct, but reformish in Badung Legos Road for twenty years, they have not been able to finish it. They will finish one side, but by the time they finish the other side, it's second side. Is that great?
Yes.
You don't want to talk about healthcare, you don't want to talk about schools that we saw in the process of travel. You don't want to talk about the opportunities that have been lost after done projects everywhere. And you don't want to talk about the fraud that Nigeria represents. You know, the partition of Nigeria in a way that where there are no people, you have several local governments, where there are people, no local governments. You know, that whole federation scam, you know. And that was why I was confident enough to tell people when they say, oh, uh, let us do, uh, restructuring. First and foremost, when you want to restructure a country, you can abandon it, you know, the constitution that is a fraud. The Nigerian constitution, the Nigerian constitution is the most prominent document that exists in the House of Lords. It was made by soldiers, military guys who were living power. And they wrote a phrase there, we people of Nigeria, there was no person in Nigeria that was part of the making of the constitution. And when people cannot make their own constitution, the constitution cannot be a living, you know, uh, project or a living document because the life of the people was not breathed, uh, was, was, was not given to that particular document. So to start with, I said, well, restructuring is fantastic. I believe in it, any country that has existed for a long, that Nigeria has existed, it's like a car that you bought, it requires fixing, you know, you need to change the chassis. Some places change the tire, some places you need to change the engine, in some places you need to object, send the car and buy a new car. And in Nigeria's case, Nigeria itself, ladies and gentlemen, was set up as a business by the British. It was actually set up by a company that was like Royal Nigeria Company. Yes, and the idea was that the British wanted a place where they could do business. And Nigeria was their outpost, just like several other African countries. Until Nigeria becomes a nation, Nigeria cannot serve the interest of the people of Nigeria. But Nigeria will not become a nation because they are chanting restructuring, restructuring. Because the people who are proponents of restructuring are the same people who are restructuring Nigeria to their pockets. If you give them a chance to restructure Nigeria again, they will divide it in amounts themselves. The restructuring Nigeria needs has to do with a very, very radical restructuring, that these people who are radical enough to take on the antiquated, old, wicked, corrupt system. Tear it apart, look at these leaders in their faces and tell them to their face that Nigeria does not need you anymore. Nigeria needs to move in a different direction, the ones that are this will be constructed, the confronted will be confronted, the ones that are corrupt should be sent to where they belong. There's no reason why Nigerians should be worshiping people who destroyed Nigeria on a daily basis. Whereas innocent people that stole chicken are lambishing in prison. The likes of Babamina stays in a fifty-room mansion in Nigeria. Obasan goes to another mansion in Abel Kuta, Abu Bakar is staying in another mansion in Nigeria, stay checking in Ternina. All these terrible leaders, they need to be sent into oblivion. And if you are in doubt about this, Greece here is an example of where a young person came. From somewhere, I was told that one of the first things it did was to remove the police that was guarding all their corrupt leaders and put them back in the police force, anybody that is rich cannot have one or two police. Before you knew it, Greece was able to pull itself out of an economic recession. But in Nigeria, the more wicked you are, the more policemen you have. Even garage stops in Nigeria, they have policemen, five mobile policemen, six mobile policemen guarding them. When I was running for presidency, applied for police protection, they said they can never beat me. But they called me aside and said, if you are ready, we have the special one. I said, tell me about the special one. They said, well, do you want one deluxe bus in front and one in back? I said, yes, so this is the amount. They didn't know who we were talking to. So do you need two policemen in front and two policemen in the back and one between the cars? I said, yes, this is the amount. Do you need AK-47 carried by this thing and everybody carrying gun? I said, yes, this is the amount. Do you need AK-47 to have two magazines? If it's one magazine, if I keep that back home, no one will shoot you, we will not leave you without it. I said, yes, this is the amount. There's a black market for security here in Namibia. But the ordinary people have no protection in Nigeria. That was why we designed our own agenda and call it Spicer Heat. In my security, it was the first item on the agenda of Spicer Heat program. And which is followed by power. We said during that time that without power, electricity in Nigeria is going nowhere. There's no, you don't need to tell a primary school student about it. Do you know that three days ago?
Dangote.
Was now saying that in the past eighteen years, they have not been able to put in one thousand megawatts of electricity. It was comparing what Egypt did, Egypt has done almost twenty thousand megawatts. I said, Dangote is stealing my ideas, this is what I said during the election. And we talk about infrastructure. Nigeria has massive infrastructural deficits. There is no connectivity, there's no integration. So how do we get from twenty to B? At the point that we are supposed to have had the train, fast train moving from Lagos to Porta Call to Ndombe. They are still trying to construct the Second Nigeria Bridge. And without completing the Second Nigeria Bridge, they are advertising it every day. Everybody goes to visit the Second Nigeria Bridge, the pillar is there, I see this mega. I said, why not show Ghana then complete the bridge, then the people use it and stop going there for quick image, to kill people. I'm sorry to say, we have no, our leaders lack common sense. But it is because we have not gotten strong enough to confront them. And tell them and challenge them and say enough is enough. And not being enough means that you might take extraordinary measures, like they did in Sudan. Like they did in Nigeria, they did in Tunisia. Because when you push people to the war, they are supposed to turn around and bite you back. But in Nigeria, you push them into the war, they are going to give them tiger, you'll be taking you to that war. And leaders have become used to the fact that no matter which direction you push Nigerians, they will endure the nonsense. And then they turn around and be calling you Iraq again. President, you, you go to every church in Nigeria, the criminalists sit in front, you know. Church even has become business, mosque has become an economic business. Because why, there's always a correlation between poverty and religious. Even the people that are gay are not religious, they are not as religious as they are. Yes, so people came from here, why is there, why is there no church in every street in Greece? I've not seen any church except on top of mountains, you know. Yes, there's a small church there, you know. Yes, and I was, you know, on every street. Yeah, when in Nigeria, when you look past the church, can't you see? Well, none of us would go the side of religion, you know, because, you know, the pastors also came after me during the election. I'm always constantly criticizing the way of life, I don't understand why. No, you know, you don't have to be, you don't have to take guilt on behalf of people who are not, who are not representing you. It's not their job. I don't understand why people are so poor in Nigeria, pastors are flying jets around. You know, people who come to church cannot afford to go to universities run by the church. Yes, it's a contradiction, you know. But again, we are not here to preach, but I would invite them to church tomorrow, so to take down this morbid. But ladies and gentlemen, without boring you, one of the last thing I want us to do before I sit down is also to engage. Uh, you probably have seen Cortes, Channing, Storm, Talk Talk Talk, we are used to them. And then when they leave, they do a different thing and they don't listen to you, they don't hear you out. Even when they listen to you, they are always like, I mean, they are horrible. Uh, tonight, we may be in a horrible, but I would love also to take questions, uh, take comments, suggestions. Uh, it is through the questions and comments and suggestions that we can figure out, like Vince says, what's happened before. But I can tell you guys, critically, that I don't have much to reveal about why we fell. Because the rules were not, rules for elections were not met, the conditions for elections were not met. So I did not accept as a candidate that I lost an election last night because there was no election. Yes, as I mentioned, if you went to the World Cup with the team and the team did not play, and somebody is licking the cock, I'm walking around, you know that sport? Right, and that's what happened in Nigeria. I, I believe very strongly that if Nigerians were allowed to exercise their franchise, you know, during the last election, if they are allowed to vote without intimidation, without harassment, without the fraud that attended the two thousand and nineteen selection, we would have had a different result today. And I'm sure that Nigerians are tired of this set of leaders that we have now. I have no doubt that Nigerians are tired of Buhari, even at the point his wife was tired of him. So why would other people not be tired of him? One last thing I will say, which might be a little alarming, is that Nigeria doesn't have much time left. Yes, if there's any time I am scared about Nigeria as a united entity, whatever you want to call it, it is this time. It feels like mentally, a lot of, a lot of Nigerians are bad Nigeria. And if they keep managing Nigeria the way they are, if they keep driving Nigeria on this road. It's a matter of time before the container at the bar detaches from the trailer motor that is driving Nigeria. And you can imagine what will happen. I hope it does, it's my hope that Nigeria remains a united entity, but only on the basis of justice. If we continue to have an unfair and unjust, uh, country, nation managed by the enemies of the people, it will not continue for long time. So I am scared, and I'm scared, and I have to say this about Nigeria. I think a lot of people are tired of Nigeria, the way Nigeria is now. And a lot of people, things can happen. The only option we have is for us to start right now to head in a different direction. This particular direction is leading us to nowhere but the Atlantic Ocean. Something we have to give, it's just a matter of time, things continue this way. And this is the first time in my adult life, I'm forty-eight years old, I am genuinely scared about Nigeria. I was around when June fourth was announced. I was scared, but I was never this scared and, you know, I was behind Abella. Even when Abella died, we were worried that his death would lead to the stagnation of Nigeria, but he didn't. But this time around, you know, the cleavages are widening up because of class inequality, because of poverty, because of, because of ethnic injustice, because of division, uh, superiority and inferiority complex is splashing. And the unorthodox way of government, uh, that Nigeria has adopted. So as last thing, I, I want to say because I have the good news in my mind, uh, but I have to say that so that my mind can free up too, that I express this to my fellow Nigerians that I met you there. So, uh, on that note, I wish, thank you so much, and I want to thank you for joining us, thank you so much. One thing you can't do is to give the opposition my phone, because I don't know how to stop. But I, I want to stop, uh, at this point. Thank you once again for your time, uh, thank you also for putting this together with a short time. We have plans to come back, uh, we have a plan in European for this to remain a global movement. We don't want to run another political party of, you know, the way you're running in Nigeria, we want to have a movement. So that our agenda, our conduct, our characteristics are distinct and different from the ones that we are used to. As though we don't hide our feelings, we don't hide our position on issues. And we hope you two continue to hold your own very strong. One of our house people and needs to do is that we hope that you will set up your executives as soon as possible here, uh, so that we can recognize, uh, the group here and whatever you need from us, uh, to be free to reach out to the meaning of the leaders, Vince will be in possession of, uh, my contacts. And as I travel around the world, I, you know, continue to be sure that whatever ideas will be stopped over here anyways. Uh, one thing you should know, uh, is that there are twenty million Nigerians outside of Nigeria, twenty legitimate. Yes, that's bigger than a lot of African countries. We are so strong that at this point, we are contributing more money to Nigerian economy than they don't worry about. Through remittances. But nobody would even allow us to vote. Part of our agenda is to force a Dasura voting rights on the government of Nigeria being the next four years. Another thing is to, uh, also force them to adopt electronic votes. In such a way that every Nigerian that is in possession of a document that is electronically verified can vote anywhere they are, including abroad. Where there's no way we can be having ATMs where you can withdraw money, regardless of where you open an account. And you cannot have Nigeria's votes wherever they might find themselves. It is our inability to vote transparently against the likes of Buhari and opportunity to do this criminal act that he did in two thousand and nineteen, which was called election. So, thank you once again, I just wanted to make this.
A A C.
Take it back.
A A C.
Take it back.
A A C.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Ashol.
Take it back.
Ashol.
Take it back.
Ashol.
Great, thank you very much, our future president, Jimmy. I really appreciate all the, uh, mancrises, ten points and mancrises of A A C that you have really, uh, given us all, because what A A C stands for and what you have for the future votes. So with these notes, we have gone to a, uh, comment section. Question and answers, because we have some questions, there are some secrecy that I believe that you guys should know. And there are some information that you might have. And there are some information that you might have heard somewhere, that you will need clarification from him directly. So I would appreciate your questions, and we don't want history questions. We just need you to go straight to the point, you know, what I'm saying, we just need half questions, question. We don't need a lot of stories, because we have enough with, you know, uh, thousands of questions to ask. So please, uh, we need questions. Question, Eric? Question and answer, please.
Okay, sir, please, your question, uh, here. And thank you, uh, our future president. I am the chairman of Nigeria's International Office of Greece. It's a bit of a joke, you know, depending on the, um, you see, uh, and listen to what I'm saying, and, uh, it's something amusing, when I say it's something amusing, because you know how we started, and, uh, we have been here, seeing what's going on back home, doing things here. Uh, what I'm saying now has to be just, when you come into, you know, after the, when we pass. You see, when the election was going on, almost all Nigerians abroad, they are trying. They are seeing everything, because it also can, we have this digital system up here. So, nothing, what I said was good for us, you know, but we continue trying for the fact that we couldn't do anything. Our hands, uh, have died, and, and you somehow mentioned some of them, and you know what I'm doing, trying to tackle the, the, the monster back home. And we know why we couldn't move forward. But with you, maybe apart from you, there's another, uh, uh, DASRA, you know, uh, that tried, like, to do something, and you couldn't reach him away. And after, you know, he came back in the early, we were together, you know, to our election, we tried to organize this. Do the thing again, uh, my people, people like him, we need them. I mean, we, outside.
Yes.
We need them to make our voice, hand back home, we need them to work, to reach our people. You are here in Greece, I'm, I'm, I'm going to use the example of Greece. Greece is something today, it's because of their DASRA system. One by me, when you talk of the Jews, the, uh, 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 the people who talk of, are Greeks. They manipulate their, their system from outside. You talk of voting rights. I would like you to take it up, bring this four years. We, DASRA, we are fighting it, you know, yeah, I've been saying it, trying to see how to make Nigerians get their, their ID, national ID, and make it possible for them whenever things are coming. We don't take it as a personal something, because we know that the DASRA companies, they see, they are playing, playing games to them, and they don't take it off themselves, you make it available to people. Although it will cost us, but you know their profits. And this opportunity to let you know that, that when we are, when Nigeria is beginning, let them to put their, their hand on that, because that will give you a chance to, to, to do what they're going to do with people like you. Because without your voting rights, without your ID, we are still nowhere. And this is what the cameras are using, they're trying to suppress me and me. Without, without having the right. We are here in Greece, you know what Greece do. Their university, everything is built by, I mean, Greece, in DASRA. And they are even talking, this point they are high, man, before the whole disaster, this young guy that came, had a bag in with Greece abroad. Trying to forget this, uh, easier for them. And you don't think they're telling you, they're talking this off. You saying it, how, how, what did it stop because of this young guy? Because he has, it's a young guy, and that thinks, I hate those, I hate the university. I have all the, all the big guys, and yet he's not that. This election, they take a bank, you know, you don't have, we are in the country, I think this is what you want, you know, for him. Just like what you have been, coming, just now, they, somebody who started, have not been, they still, they have not been, they're not there. Just, you know, we are, like him, he made it because they don't have an army to help you. They think such a difference. And it's what you are doing. Have you seen any, any of those, uh, 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 big guys coming to see you?
No.
To see a person here, this person, you pay your, your best president, if, if, if you know what to do. But you know what to do, then you, you, first of all, say to yourself that yes, I have, I have. Because you said it also, we have been, my ass, we have been, God, I don't know how to put it. You know, when you see our, our eyes, we say, ah, this is, this is what my goal is. You, you and me, we are inside the same boat. You, you, you see the person to our side, trying to, to the, the, what you're thinking, you are, you're not side, it's, it doesn't concern me. This is what you are doing, it doesn't concern me, until they vote, both of you will do what, say, say. So this time around, two things, I thought that I don't want to waste time, I want to do something. You mention two things that are pending, that you need. These are done, we can have a seat, and I know we can do that, I'm sure. Help us to do those things. Our voting rights, yes, our ID issue. And leave the rest for us. We will have to make this work, when I come. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
And next, my question, we are still on comment section, you have questions?
Comments, come.
Comments, please, your name, please.
Um, President, oh, yeah. A A C.
Take it back!
Take it back!
Ashom!
Um, I want to thank our president, Jimmy, in the near future. I'm so happy you're here with us today. And you made emphasis on, you're starting very early this time around. I praise God for that. Yes, sir, I will ask one question, uh, let me just, uh, I will pass you. Um, I think it's better, because most people back home, they've been waiting on you to see, and I don't look at money Nigeria. Sessions like this, back home, since the election is over, it's not good to just relax and stay back. It's good to go back to them again, show to them, because I saw, I'm from Benin.
Yes.
Yeah, I know how those boys went, going to, to the villages, and people asking them, give us money. Uh, if you don't give us money, we don't support. I think this time around, it's good we start early too, to begin to let them know. Let your presence be felt, let them know feel that, uh, you, you didn't come out as a president, you just went back in. As some would say, you made some money, you took the money, you just relaxed back. So it's high time you come out, sir, and let them know that, yes, we are starting. Or do we have any, any, uh, uh, um, penalty? Do you have any penalty in Nigeria if you start now, begin to reach out to the people, sir?
No penalty, I've said that, actually, I obviously thank you so much. We have been doing that, uh, it goes on before you saw the motion, that will have five hundred people after the election. Uh, on June seventeen, there was going to be a major protest, and it was led by the A A C to discontinue electricity bill, which is one of the biggest problems that people are facing. They don't supply the electricity, but they get paid for it. So we have been, I also went to, uh, people, we made before I came. We have a lot of things set up for universities, uh, and the impression that all of the big money, uh, people say that, because, like I mentioned, they targeted us after the election, because they saw how powerful the delivery was. They, all the money we raised was about one sixty million Naira. We will not do a rally for A B C, you know, in Nigeria. But they were surprised that we could use that little money to have the kind of rich we had. And the other next thing is, Nigeria, when they hear figures, they think of them, they came one day. They didn't understand, some people didn't understand, but some did, you know, and a lot of people appreciate us for doing that. That it took a year to raise that amount of money, and knowing it was a little, uh, drop rate. But we managed it very well, and that was why we're going to also give an accounting of the money that we raised after the election. But after you, a lot of people spent money without giving it to us directly, they sent money to their villages, to central offices. And I should also inform you that in many cities, as we speak, some of our people have started a soap-making group, and they teach people how to make soap. Uh, a lot of projects are coming up, some of our people have paid by means of refugees in several states. A lot of programs, philanthropy. My opposition, uh, the last one is that, yes, you can look philanthropically, build schools, donate chairs. But what we eventually solve Nigeria's problem is not individual philanthropy, but responsible governance. That's what's going on. So we must make sure that we run a country, run by us, that can build schools, not to be donating five chairs to the school. We need thousands of classrooms in Nigeria, we must be on it. We need thousands of highway, we need train lines. No individual can donate trains, no individual can really donate highways. There's government that should do it. So changing the government is a bigger priority for us than philanthropy. But we encourage those of you who want to do philanthropy, do it through A A C, take it back. If you want to sponsor, well, you have even employment, and a lot of our people who followed us this time around do need jobs, so that when we are doing the next election, they are able to contribute, even to the election. Nobody are able to raise money in Nigeria to run a session like we did, the one we did. It is because Nigerians believed that these guys have a different, otherwise Nigerians will wait for you to come and give them money to vote for them. In our own case, they were extending money towards, we were, we were in a police station in motion, and I think they showed it. And I met the police officer there, who said, I'm a regular contributor to you anytime you are in the couch. He was telling their boss, he said, don't touch these people, because these are the people who are going to migrate Nigeria in the future. Because I'm tired of wearing this stupid uniform. And collecting, so, he said, anytime they go out and they collect money, he doesn't share with them. Because he knows that it's blood money. The same people that have nothing to eat, don't send to you money, there's no way they will get money, they have to reach. So anytime they are costing the cost, they follow you. So when something tells what happens to you in the future, just know it's the two hundred Naira you are collecting from. You know what the old man's called, a bad lover, you know, you are collecting from somebody who doesn't have. So it must affect you. So, everybody donated to us, like people were donating one thousand Naira, two hundred Naira, five hundred Naira to our lending bank account. A lot of people donated to GoFundMe, a lot of people sent us money through our state chapters. Particularly in those states, we had a lot of support, of people who directly funded, their local governments. So, the activities are going on, and it's part of what we're expecting to do, when you organize enough, whatever you want to do. But centrally, it is supporting and building a movement that can wrestle power from these people that is going to eventually save Nigeria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name is?
My name is Akachin.
Your name is?
You are very welcome to Greece.
Thank you.
I think, you know, now it's, it's different from what you had. So I would like to ask you a question, because you've been saying a lot of things about, I know, we all are from Nigeria, and it's not difficult to hear, like, what happened, I was really disappointed, not really disappointed in the election. Because I was discussing with friends, and they were telling me about A A C, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So the young guy that came in this and said, okay, it's very good, it's a person, that we have a young person running for the election. But I don't know, because we have
Go ahead.
Because we have a lot of, I mean, I'll call them, I usually call them godfathers, that never leave the position in there. So I want to ask you now, that you've run, and you saw what happened in the previous election. What is, what is it that you're going to do differently this time? I mean, to make it, I mean, not repeat, or what happened not repeat itself? Because not by bribing, or giving, or what, what is it that you're going to do now, make the change?
Thank you very much, so what will you do differently from what we're doing now? Starting, uh, the next elections will be in twenty, you know, three. And we have to build movements that are for our students and graduates. I am surprised, and I'm saying it again, that that many people actually heard from us. At this conference that I attended yesterday, I met a guy from Congo. He said his son abandoned his house to my campaign office, the guy has never met me before. He just listened one day on my Facebook and saw what I was saying. If you also look at, and I'm just looking at, at the past, if you go to Facebook and social media today, when Zafara started, they went on big things, I said it was Zafara, as if I was not only a candidate, I was not able enough to predict the future. And they called it and put it there. When, few days ago, they said June twelve is now Democracy Day. They went on a trip, like I said in November, a year ago, that I will make June twelve in Democracy Day. Three days later, Bouharri ran to Abiola's family, so they did a package G C F R, you know, for all of them, just so that they would steal that idea. And many things that I would say, but we're starting now, so that the message that we already have can reach everybody that is looking for liberation. And also, not to miss words about our determination this time around. That is why I'm using words sometimes that some people might find provocative, like revolution. But there's nothing wrong with it, because until they know that everybody is ready and tired of nonsense, you cannot wrestle power from us. This is what they need, this is their social security power in Nigeria, political power. This is what, and if you let them continue like this, the power will not be transferred to the people, will transfer to their families. And you will just be looking, and your delegation will be, will be an onlooker. People ask all the time, like I said, oh, why don't you guys start from Africa? When I asked them, when Zik was fighting for independence, how old was he? Not a roll of wool was fighting for independence, how old was he? And twice the age of everybody that fought for Nigeria's independence, they were in their twenties. More like the way he was secretary of, uh, you know, the Ashom Group, they were, they were twenty years old. Even Bouharri, when he first became the head of state, how old was he? Or Basodre, when he was first head of state, how old was he? When Dr. Azad did the coup in nineteen eighty-five, how old was he? These guys were either they are twenty, or Nazis. When Bouharri became the president of Nigeria through a coup, how old was he? Twenty-nine, he got married after he became the head of state. And people are looking at, and say, you see, when I become eighty-something, that is not telling the, I'm a Nigerian president. And you are looking as your life is departing from you. You are looking as they are separating you from a destiny that should make you happy. Why are we all sitting here today, ladies and gentlemen? It's not because we are not comfortable in, in Greece, some of you don't even need Nigeria, some of you have built homes in Nigeria that you never stayed in. But because somehow they very, um, eager for in that place, and you are always wishing for a better Nigeria. I'll say something here to a friend of ours when I arrived, that each time, I think it was present, each time I see a bridge that is working, I wish I could just go to the bridge and replicate it and put it in a post office, uh, sending it there. If I see a school that is working, I wish I could just go there and send it by, you know, uh, Zatukia, or Fedex, to Nigeria. Because I cannot stand the fact that things that ordinarily will work in are not even functioning. I'll say something to you that might shock those of you who are sitting here today. That had Nigerians made the right choice on February twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, and who tells us, me, we do have, by now, Nigeria will be a different place. twenty nineteen, and who tells us, me, we do have a, by now Nigeria will be a different place. Yes, I'm telling you, I will have nothing, I'm not driving. I will have rolled up my sleeves, by now, you will hear that president is here, president is here. Places are being fixed, boggles are being done, justice will be returning, we are talking to the people we are, we need to talk to. Conversations that used to be happening are happening, dialogue that used to be happening are happening, people we need to apologize to for the injustice we've done to them, we apologize to them. Like people of the southeast, you know, and I'm not saying to please anybody, you cannot kill three million people from a place for no just cause, say the war is over and you continue the war. So in talking to everybody, open the space for the conversations that we are afraid of. You know, open the space for the country that people are, places that people are afraid to go to, they will be able to go to the place. And then the criminals that are perpetrating the crime in Nigeria know that there is no support from them in Nasser Rock, they will pack and go. Some people will leave the country on their own pollution and never come back. I don't have to drive them because the policies of governments will make it clear that they and I cannot be cohabited. It's, it's as simple as that, and I've never missed words about this, and that would have been the revolution we're talking about. Because suddenly, you can also come back home at the airport and go cross some person who's asking you for what you're earning for me, which is great. Or that there's air conditioning in the airport, it shouldn't take more than five days to restore it. Because when they restore the conditioning, somebody is actually removing the air conditioning. When the roads are not working, someone has given the contract and he refuses to implement it. But if they know that the president that came to power did not come through God's access, or the contractors will know that they have to be looking back to sides. It's as simple as that, it's just a general call, that would be the speech of the day. If they are contractors and you are in charge of a federal contract, please, don't let me remind you. Go back to site and complete the project. The team, such a time, because you have already received mobilization. I don't care, and I'm saying this categorically, I'm sorry for those who are feeling for traditional role, if you are traditional role, as long as you are contractor, you do the contract first. Otherwise, you and your crown will be in jail. So this, this, this are things that become very depressing to me. The day Bahari was sworn in, I just couldn't leave the chest, because I imagine myself standing, you know, on that podium that day. And making a few declarations. And the country will just be a lot of violence from that day. Yes, and that's the way it is happening. And some of the terrible season we fought, you know, this will shake off. All right, your question.
My name is Akachin Bakary. I was, uh, in Greece during the campaign, and I hope to know you on YouTube. So following you gave me a lot of hope about Nigeria, and I was like eighty percent sure that this is not going to win the election. So fortunately for me, I was in Nigeria a few weeks before the election. Well, I'm glad you're to be Nigeria, but I was asking you, how far about the election, what I don't know for sure, it was like that. You don't even know if it's going to be likely or actually to be, then I said, are you supposed to be? You are interested in this, because you don't even know the candidates that we have in Nigeria. So you what? And I mentioned to him, who would know that one? Are you serious? That means you are not educated about what is going to happen in Nigeria. I left a few days later, I went out, asked this, asked that, nobody knows. And I was like, what is going on? I stay at the house. Then the following day, he came back to me and he told me, bro, where you come from? Things around there, but this is where the party is, we are having the party here. So when you get to the party, you join there. Here there is nothing like going outside. We started arguing, it took me to within the bar. It was only one area, challenge, I saw the poster, only one place. Then I look around, then I start to shrug, and evidently I don't see anything going on. What I want to bring out is this. The fact of the matter is that election is being won by the population, this is what I hear every week. And where people gather together, they have power, no matter how manipulated you are. When people don't know you, they don't know this part, they can make you do it. And my first question is, what are you planning to do? How do you plan to go about it? Making all those literates, you know, making all those mothers, all those whom are women in the market. Few, two days before the election, I was going to my house, and I could not, I don't say it every morning. And I saw a man, they are distributing Ghanian bulli. I was there with an issue, serious, it was the time where everybody, everybody was pissed off. What is going on? I discovered that the reason for all the riots, some people are just spreading out Ghanian bulli. And people are rushing their activity. First thing is, in Nigeria, you need to be very, very smart to bring people to the knowledge of what you do. If unless they will not take it, what do you plan to do to make those guys, even the students in Nigeria, because I was in Nigeria doing the election. Even the university students, they don't want to vote, all the guys are in there, they don't, they don't even have K B C. They said they're never going to get because they know already who is going to win. Everybody has dropped out, that why voting, why wasting your time, so far you know who is going to win. Unless there is a way of addressing these people, bringing them to the knowledge of the truth, they won't be able to go or see the same thing with you, that's number one. Number two is this, even this country that we have, when Zirza was about to vote and all this stuff. He couldn't do it, you know, after the vote, I know people will get, will get into that. He had to perform a coalition fight with, and they fight it. And at the long run, Chipra did not, the Prime Minister, and the, you know, the other guy, the idea, I think, the President. So, one thing I believe brings the little people that know you, not believe you, that even me, I doubt, is why not form a coalition fight with all the youth, we have vibrant youth in Nigeria of your age, that they have almost the same vision with you. And we believe that they too, on various, they can do so many things. If five or six gather together, I don't remember the number, the vote in the vote, I was following, one person even.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Other parties too, that they are youth too, they get almost the same thing, all these gather together. I think the voice will be stronger and people will be more convinced and open. If truly, all the youth that want to bring out themselves, if truly they have the, the may of Nigeria and they really want to help Nigeria, also Nigeria, why not gather together, why not do something together? What are you going to do concerning that, because we have youth now separated. It's different people in this room now, if we are out together, or if we are four, if we are divided into four. The power will be the lord, so if we are one together, it's going to be stronger and we need to fight all these useless people that are there.
Thank you.
Too much to listen, too many questions. I'm just, uh, as you know, that's once we're in here is doing life, so they're watching it while we're here. So I, I want every question to be very brief. I'll take the only three on your list, okay, sorry.
Come forward. I'm not as experienced as you. I want to pose a question, I'm not going to ask a question about, because I'm a student of what, uh, show, I'm playing through Nigeria and came back and forth. Nigeria is a country that's super magic, you can't take it, you cannot change that completely, you know. The more you talk to them, the more they tell you, are you going to go abroad? Who will be there? We're talking about here, it is here. If us to come together and accomplish this mission, it's for us to throw out the whole kid that's hanging off. One head can make a point, by all its followers, to make an impact. Coalition does not mean they all know the issues affecting us. Sometime, we need to come back to our own table and ask ourselves, who are we colonizing with? What is going to be the intake that we're bringing on table? It's not about being so much educated, it's about imparting what is actually African to Nigerians. I'm truly African, and I'm a historian, you know me very well, sometime they call me reggae boy or what, but when you come to Nigerian history, from where we found out certain now, I'll break it down for you. Our division today is us. We should start telling us the truth. It's not about the north, south, east, west or not, you know. Nigeria is a country that we can stand and tell me, if the person in North beat Opera and the person in South beat Opera, we don't have a fight. If there's no light in north, there's no light in south, there's no road in north, there's no road in south. So let's keep all these differences and stop finding a coalition. What we need to do is togetherness solution, we need a togetherness solution. No matter the tribe, no matter who is losing, no matter who is winning, together we can win those battles. I'll tell you, I, I separated from Nigerians, two thousand and one, when they had a just crisis, scared, everybody was running, they were scared. And so I met with Borin, he would tell about me, I was going to the others too, and said, all Deltas must get home before I go home. And I rescued more than a hundred and forty students of their state, getting to Assab, so it was hand. Meaning, it was not about what I'm getting game, let's fight together, let's dig what is the blame now and find a solution. This is just my little support to all the solution, because take it back does not mean I have to ask you your, your problem. Our problem is our problem, let's take it back together. And together, we can educate more Nigerians, because in Nigeria, how there is the biggest problem? What is it, to tell them the truth, they will tell you, my guy goes down, put him in, now this is the reality, you don't feature in our side. You understand, your brother is educated, yeah, he knows the truth, he knows that, ah, this party will grow, but I'm here, I'm thinking, yeah, I'm not a subject, you know. Then they think, who, who will be the family, where come from, you don't see it before, or you don't see it before, all this must not be wrong, you want to be bad, I will be so, then it pop out here. So maybe you say, I feel that, join together, take her like that. You don't need to condescend, say, I'm so like in coalition, there is no coalition, together we'll take it back from now and forever, this is my stand. Thank you very much.
And my favorite question, that you are two young and sitting there, please, just as you mentioned. Uh, Master, what can I do?
Just wanted to, uh, to, for my question. What is your question? Looking at the political government in Nigeria. If Nigeria was to be a country where they said to an estimate free and fair election, who would prevail? Definitely, who would have been able to, right? Now, when I heard you spoke, I see that it was different, that we have the same ears in that country. Because I believe that the powers that be will not easily let it go, this has been for decades. To me, is it how to win, involve the youth, because it is the duty that regularly on the impulse of taking decision. In all, they go to the market to share direction and all the signals, you know, it's difficult to change their direction. Then we, that are young, those that are, even younger than we do, I can think, the war is war, you did not give them money, you have just been like, that's happened. This is different, just like the political party that took the land of Brazil, it was a young man and he came out and fought. They had no political hat in their nation before. The man ran for the mayor of Athens years back and lost. But over time, they went and built themselves into the country. So we have to involve the youth. Because if they were to get a revolution, they don't afford one, you are already comfortable, you have to mobilize the youth, those in the schools, those, and I think you play a very better way. And also, just a question, when you run, did you really think that you will win?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, and, uh, the name, this, this, yeah, I spoke, so as I said, is more than Africa. Do you think that is giving out a more effective force in Nigeria, to be cohesive in Nigeria? Because looking at the name, it's a great name, but is it what will help us to be focused? Because we know that there are factors around this thing, and, and, so maybe your response will be like that.
Thank you so much.
I think I can just say that for a minute, because, uh, I'll give a raise, I'll increase it to three more people, okay, so I'll take the more questions.
Please, sir.
Please.
Nice to meet you, you're quite a person. So please, I just, my name is.
Your name is?
My name is Flip Alamata. And please, I just want to ask a little question, just a small question. Uh, we are Nigerians, and I see that Nigeria is scattered by different ways. Me, I'm, I'm like a Biafa man.
Yes.
You understand me, because of the way we see ourselves, we are part of Nigeria, so we need to fight our fear of.
Yes.
But when I heard that you are doing campaign, I'm always following you, why do I follow you? Because you are youth. That is why I joined to follow you, and when he came here, I tried to talk to my biobat people, that's why they are attending me to campaign. Actually, I decided to be a Biafa. So my question goes like this, how can you bring Nigerians together? How can you discuss with Inman Karo? How can you meet him? How can you bring the guy together and discuss with the guy, so the guy can bring the youth to you? So you people can join him together and make Nigeria to be one? So please, I want to know, how can you do that? Thank you very much.
Your name is, my name is Adetshing Ashon. This is not a question, it's just an advice to you, sir. Like a friend of mine is a good supporter of you, anytime I ask you, anytime I ask you like, Ben, what do you say about this election? You say you are going to win. But when I call back home, they say this man is social media president. So what I want to tell you now is that you should go back home, try your best to win the show back home, not the media. Because I don't see anything, uh, without back home, if it's only the media, we are not going anywhere, that is just.
Thank you.
Your name was again?
Ashon, he is back, take it back. Take it back.
Action!
Um, Mr. Oboyedemshure, uh, future president. Uh, I'm actually here today because I know you are coming, and I want to have this privilege or this opportunity to meet you. Uh, you have been, you have been a mentor in Nigeria, to Nigerian youth, and you have been a very solid voice. And, you know, in politics, I don't want you to be, uh, to be discouraged or to lose focus. From when I started following you, following you fully, was when I saw you on YouTube with one of the ministers, I don't know if he's still the minister of communication or whatever. You know, when I saw him talking to you, the way he was addressing you even publicly, and I know that this thing is going viral. I was wondering, that who made this such kind of people ministers of ours? Because I saw your composure and your coordination, he wasn't coordinated at all all through the interview. So I said to myself, that there is something this man is bringing into this country. And this old man, we don't want him to stand. And somebody talked about coalition, and when the other young man from Delta, when he answered, I think maybe he was trying to misunderstand this man. I, I have some friends back home that are into politics too, like some in here, here in. I, I have some friends back home that are into politics too, like some in here, here in Nairobi and so on, they are youths as well. Uh, I believe the coalition, you talk about revolution in most of your words, I, I always speak that word. And we cannot revolt, we cannot do anything alone without togetherness. I believe the voice you have now, joining it together with that of those other youths that have the same ambition with you. I believe can take AAC to greater heights. We look forward to seeing a country where the youths will have voice. We see what is happening all over the world now, the youths are taking all over. And Nigeria is also supposed to be an essential. Uh, the issue of coalition, trying to, uh, join forces with other parties that you know they are youths. They have the same ideology or the same vision with you. I think it would be, it would be a very good start for us to really get there, because we cannot wait at all.
Here is it.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action!
My name is Mr. Odeun Delsawo, the Assistant Director of Nigeria Committee. Uh, thank you, my coming president. I believe that Mr. Omoye Edejo will reign with Nigeria. I have a doubt about this, it will take time, okay? Because there will be a parable in my place, it will take time to soon, and look for this place, okay? Uh, sir, our first of us, keep one of us here. I will make myself as an example. I was following you on Facebook, Instagram, everywhere. Believe me, I forced my parents to go and vote for him. Told them, listen, this is the, not calling me, send me money, send me money, send me money. I'm tired. So please, me, I'm not sending money, right? I think it is time, I have to say that. Which they tell me, okay. And they went to the polling units, they did not say any of the origin of the violence, believe me, I was so disappointed. I would say that. So, what I'm trying to say to everyone here is this. Sir, I will first of all beg you. Uh, we in the Asprora, we have voice. More than people in Africa, take it or leave it. Me, I shall tell you, I can convince ten to fifteen people in Nigeria, the main city. Only me, as my family, it can convince fifteen people. I would like this, your visit of this time. I would like to repeat it, not only to Greece, to every part of you. Try to tell them your mission. They can easily convince their people back home as well. Believe me, we are so, I think, we here, we are not up to one. Nigeria's in Athens is more than two thousand. If I'm not maybe the mistake, Nigeria is more. Okay, so, sir, I will beg, please, I would like you to visit and, uh, I don't know is your party leader here? To make sure to spread news as much as you can. Because believe me, for now, I don't believe you can start going back to Nigeria and be doing campaign, because the election is going. But you have the rights to do campaign in Europe, in, in the Asprora, okay? So sir, please, I would like you to visit and make this schedule, make it popular to everybody to know. For people to hear his vision, his famous hope of Nigeria. And so please, we here as well, please, if we really, we want to take it back from our hearts. We should as well convince our people back home that it's time, we are tired of this thing. People ruling from ages, still ruling us.
Because I love you, you are willing to take it back. Two of those, as it's really, I feel about what it takes. And I believe today, before we can take back home. We have to find out, of our, our, and establish nearby, we can stop doing, all we have, all we have. Then live as we live. And we are the simplest, I have to say, we are the people of Africa. Always, and you, or try and see how we can, like, stretch the kind of, uh, a group. Where you can, where you can get a touch of so people, all this, about their lives. You know, their songs, or their, I mean, those ones who feel that they are, get close to them. Form a group with them. Let them be part of your, uh, part of your campaign, uh, whatever.
Their children.
Their children, I mean, their children. No, it's not because, because this man, he has what to take, he have what to fix. You have what to fix, you have to put them with your, you understand? You can find out, I mean, I don't hope you, you can get. That one, you can take the part of him. As long as you got, uh, you got the part of him.
Because they wanted the outcome that we sought today. We, on our part, went to contest for an election with ideas. They went into the election with handouts. And even at the end of the day, some people were willing to take their money and their rights and still vote against them. But they did not make it possible for such people to even see the ballot paper.
That's correct.
Talkless of voting. We are talking about Beni and the issue of agents. For you to have agents in all the polling booths in Nigeria, you need only twenty thousand agents. A lot of people volunteered to be agents because they couldn't afford it. Every agent for the PPC or PDP were collecting an average of ten thousand naira per agent. Multiplied that by one twenty thousand. All the money we raised was not enough to even pay agents. But we had volunteers who were willing to work for us. Some of them said they never saw the presiding officer till the end of the election. But yet, election results came out showing that elections took place in those areas. I want to add another thing that they did. In this election, we are talking about, about voting. Is that so many people that voted for us, even people, some of our agents had results showing that people voted for us. When they leave the coalition, they allocated zero votes to AAC. These are things that happened. In my hometown, because I was president and there was, uh, there was drone. I won in my polling unit and won in several polling units because there was drone. They couldn't leave here, they were afraid of me. I am sure that we won in several places. But there was no contest of elections. They let me win my polling unit because I was too strong for them. They brought soldiers, I fought as soldiers. They pointed gun at me and said, "Shoot." They left me alone. But in other places, even Artikoo did not win his polling unit. Oh, Shiba Do, did not win his polling unit because people were there. But in other places, for example, in certain places in Lagos, they did not allow people from the southeast to vote because they knew they were not going to vote for Buhari. Mass disenfranchisement. I'll go to the issue of coalition. You see, when we first came, we didn't have a political party. Our intention was that we push, push, push because I started February twenty eighteen. And one of the parties would accept us. At that point, there were about seventy, something parties in Nigeria. You know what PDP did? Every party that we approached, including Ghanifah Wamees' party, NCP, they went and bought them and put them in the coalition of forty-five parties. They joined PDP. The rest, APC, went and bought them. They all endorsed Artikoo. And Buhari, so only had a few parties left. Although those parties, they were briefcase parties, you couldn't know who their owners are. Even the ones that you know the owners, when you meet with them, they asked outrightly for ten million naira. For the chairman. Then the vice president, the vice chairman, was asked for another money. They were all in business, I mean, in existence to make money. That was why we secretly went and registered our own party. Before we registered our own party, all the young people met in a coalition discussion, not as pact. Maybe you guys have forgotten. And Fela Adotoya was there, Mokalu was there. When I got to the meeting, they had already brought the people that would vote for one of the candidates. I saw it because I've been doing student union for how many years. I told them that this is not transparent. The young people who were supposed to run the coalition were not different from the old people. So I left the coalition. But you know what the outcome of the coalition was? They did this, Fela Adotoya and Mokalu ran the process in the end. When Fela won, Mokalu said he would not join the coalition. Mokalu broke away from the coalition. They had already decided, even before we went to the coalition, who will be the outcome of the coalition. If they wanted to be honest, they would have chosen AAC as the coalition because we had the strongest message, we had the widest reach. Even in the allocation of votes that they did after the election, they still gave AAC a higher number of votes than Fela Adotoya and Kisele Mokalu. And Mokalu had been in the race a year before I entered. Adotoya had been in the race a year before I entered. Several of them had been in the race. The only person that entered the race after me was Obi, uh, uh, Obi, uh, uh, Obi Sissoko. And Obi crashed out of, uh, the reason why she crashed out was that her party had already endorsed Buhari. When she was traveling, that time she came by just to save face, she immediately removed her cell phone. So we are the ones who are going to see Nigeria the way it is in blue, I mean, in black and white. Some of the young participantes, you know, you saw, they were sponsored to distract the attention of young people in the election by the same old political parties. I wish, honestly, I have time to write a book or make a movie. If you watch this, you will not be discussing coalition. But there's a coalition that is out there, the coalition of the oppressed. It's a huge number of people. The coalition of the willing of Nigerians who want to save themselves from this situation is a huge number. And if all of them bond together, it's the biggest coalition you can have. The coalition of Nigerians in Dasporah, who know how countries are run, twenty million of them, who are the ones who majorly funded our campaign. You know why, the reason they were afraid of our campaign? The fact that we didn't go to anybody to get money in Nigeria. So nobody had any control over us. It was a popular funding, you know, strategy called crowdfunding. Everybody put in a little bit and that one didn't make them feel happy. And these guys have despised the means of raising money without going to meet even some very powerful people. That is something that we achieved in this election that we'll never play with. I am not in any way, you know, writing off the opportunity to have a coalition. If there's anybody who feels the same way we feel, they are welcome to join us. If I find anybody who feels the same way I feel, I will go and join the person. In fact, if there's a better candidate tomorrow, I will support the candidate and subsume my own agenda. The reason why you still join the race was because I can see superfluous and frivolous campaigning. All the young people, for example, I confronted the young people when we met at the meeting. You are talking about how to change Nigeria. You don't want to discuss the old virus and what we do to them. Ah, they said, "You are a kind of chucker." You can't disrespect them. I said, "All the people that are disrespecting you." You have to tell them, put them in their position. You know, you have to discuss what will happen in the future. You cannot be talking about the future that is hypothetical. Only a few people who are aware knows how the future is. You know, just like you say, you know, only those people who have the thought, ah, can see the future. The future should be broken down to everybody who wants to see the future. Let them see the window into that future. And the question about if I just have to win the election now. If the election was free and fair, there is no way Buhari would have defeated me. We could have started at a debate. Yes. And I'm standing in front of you. If I go to a debate with Artikoo and Buhari, would they defeat me at the end?
No, no.
I don't think I would talk about that.
No, no, no.
And that's why they didn't want to debate. If Nigerians have a chance and go through this, this fair, you know, in the square man, where we debate ideas, we're able to have the same access that they have to the media, both national, public and private that were denied. Would they defeat me? No, that was what Adania Ahmed asked me. He said, "Do you think you win the election?" I said, "If the election is free and fair, there's no way I can be defeated." And I'm not bragging, it's the truth. But you know what Adania was doing in the, in the power meeting? They were antagonistic. Then after election, she became an activist herself, fighting for Zafara. I went to Zafara and when I came back, I said, "Wow, this place is going away." That was before the election. The places we traveled to in Zafara, that and nobody can go there today and become killing feats. Forget about this whole narrative that Fladi is coming to, yes, that Fladi kidnappers. But the truth is that the Urab kidnappers still have not retired. Yes, the southeast Arab kidnappers are not, the Beni kidnappers are not retired. So the boss war the Bafana kidnapper, it sounds good because, you know, we are all tired. But the truth is that every kidnapper, regardless of where they're coming, they're still kidnapping. So why are we deceiving ourselves? So and I said, "You know, they're not just born. The insecurity in Nigeria is a threat to northern Nigeria more than any part of Nigeria has one." Everything you are hearing is under the project. They are killing people like flies in Zafara, in Kaduna, Sada, Kaduna. And they are killing people everywhere in Nigeria, it seems secure, simple, you know? So this is the problem. We would have won hands down if Nigerians were given the opportunity to hear us out. After the election, people are now listening to podcasts. They are breaking everything I said, those small, small people are listening. People will come and say, "Are you the guy who said this?" And I said, "Yes." Wow, how long I didn't vote for you? You didn't want to vote for me? People were choosing between Artikoo and Buhari. What is the difference? There's no difference. People were calling themselves articulated. Most of them, young people.
Yes.
Youth. They were all on, you know, Instagram and Facebook, calling themselves articulated, you know, Buhari teens and articulated. What is the difference? So as they will tell you that they didn't hear about us, my brother, they knew about us. They chose the path of destruction instead of path of progress. The moment you make that choice, you can never see progress. You can only see between the two dark values. And it was a choice. Otherwise, who on earth should be easy to find out about the good candidate as students? Everything I became today, I started as a student. The idea of fighting for what is right instead of what is wrong, I began as a student. When people were forming a bata, collecting money for Manku, and some of you have heard how I was offered a five oh five when I was student union leader. Why didn't I collect it and say that, "Don't mind Abiola." We didn't vote for Abiola in the election. It was after the election that we started fighting for, for Abiola. So when students tell you that they don't know of a candidate, a student that is going to school, all he did to do was have gone to Boomi and search the candidate. They know. I'm telling you, because later on towards the election, they were following us on Instagram, the students. When they realized, but then it was too late. The other thing that I will tell you about this whole popularity thing is that, let's look at some that we didn't believe, we're going that far. But now, there's a, there's a chance for them to see the difference, right? And that's why we are here. Because the election is open. Some people have asked me, "Why did I go to court?" You know, basically. I said, "In the morning time, we used to go to court and rather start using it now." You know, because when I become president, uh, a lot of things we have to be embarrassed. They know what I have done, what do you think they first did before the election? Who, the chief justice of Nigeria, just like that. Not in any way that I support the chief justice, I have said it so clearly. I was the first person to expose the guy. For that time, they were still using him. They said, "No, it's still like it is." When they decided to sacrifice him, they brought down the symbols here that sound other. And use to review this corruption in the past. So, uh, and Philip, you mentioned Biafra.
Yes.
You know, you know why people are debating about Biafra? Because they are looking for justice. That justice that eluded them before the war, during the war, and after the war is the reason Biafra is a strong thing to do in Nigeria. If they are guaranteed the justice that they are looking for. The poor man in Nigeria is not big enough for them. Yes, the continent of Africa is not big enough for an impoverished person. I say something and I don't say it to patronize you those. They have conquered the world in terms of sports, business, in terms of professionalism, you know, some of the best doctors, you know, everywhere. There's no way you go to in America, even if it's a small place, you can't, the pharmacy is there, the people are, you know, maybe sports, you know. The same thing applies to Urabans, the same thing applies to Beni, you know? But the problem is that in their own particular situation, the Biafrans were unjustly suppressed, killed, destroyed, and massacred within the Nigerian nation. But the biggest error, my brother, is that our Biafran leaders are the same people. Who are very quick to vote for the people who carried out the war. Did Buhari participate in the war? Why she didn't allow to even campaign for it? Did the Basanjo participate in the war? You know, at the point, they were even giving that easy. Yes. I'm telling you. And, you know, I'm talking about, this is actually Beni Polan, but also everywhere in Nigeria. Every time there's an opportunity for Nigeria to have a new president that could come from the southeast. You know the first set of people that the Uban bring out, they say they don't want, the Uban brings from Southeasterners. I'm not saying this is a general characteristic of the people. When the Bani didn't want to leave, it was Zilibe who said he must stay forever. When the bata didn't want to leave, they went and brought some people from the southeast. Not from the southeast though, but the stronger parts. Even when the Basanjo didn't say want to go to Otan, who was the guy who was leading, who wanted to make? Who used to be in the airbase or something like that? Ah, instead of Basanjo, it's the best thing to happen. I said, "Why can't we find somebody from the southeast who can do a better job? Why is that we are the ones who have ahead of everybody saying that this Urab person must not live power? When is power going to reach the southeast if each time there is a open? You say the person who is there must continue." So we must review the position of these leaders. I am the first, one of the first persons to interview, uh, Nangu, Gano, Osahar Akshmi. And one of the things I told him at that time, I said, "Start speaking on behalf of all the oppressed people in Nigeria." This idea of alienating people by saying, "Urab is stupid, how are they go wrong?" It's not going to help you because if you're not knowing, Urab people also need you to lead them to freedom. How are people too, they are oppressed. If they can find a UNAMBCAN that can lead them out of this nonsense, they will follow UNAMBCAN. If Urabans want, can find a UNAMBCAN that is willing to lead them. Everybody is looking for freedom. They are not going to ask for the ethnicity of the guy who can lead them to freedom. When Moses led Israel out of Egypt, they didn't ask for that, his people or Urab, how are they? All they did to do is, you said, "Don't go and make bread," you know that bread that they used to make that delays them. And then when they left, they never looked at Egypt again. If they have been asking, "Ah, you, you that is fat, you can't follow us, the one that is, uh, short, you can't follow us." You, I met with, that was my, that was my position at that time. But good news now is that even when you hear his message, these days, you know that he has taken into consideration the fact that, you know, justice is a global phenomenon. I've been asked to meet him, by the way, I'll meet him any day, but he's ready. But the conversation was clear around how we can save our general humanity. And it ties into the question about why we African-African Congress as opposed to Nigerian-African Congress, you know? Is that the fate of Africa is also tied to the fate of Nigeria. Nigeria being the most populous country on the continent of Africa. You know, I studied geography and when I walked in your class one day, my teacher showed me the map of Africa. He said, "Do you know how it looks like? It says like a pistol." Do you know where the trigger is Nigeria? But the problem with the African continent as a pistol is that the pistol is facing down. They are saying, "You shoot it, they are going to shoot you." You know, that's the problem. So Nigeria is so central to the, the, the freedom of Africa that there's no way Nigeria can be a prosperous country and the rest of Africa is not prosperous and Nigeria can be at peace. Most of the Fladi heads men that you're hearing about, they are coming from the Jade Chad because they are facing poverty in their own regions too. One of the worst cities in Nigeria is because our food is going across the border to take care of their own baby. If I'm an African president, do you know what I would do? All those countries have petrol stations there, yes, on the airbase. So you can buy the same price, you don't have to come and steal. And we're making money from it. You have, anybody who is the president of Nigeria is the president of Africa today. That's the reality. So don't try to change yourself. That is why you see, you know, somebody said they are in Nigeria, there's a Ghanaian here, by the way. Yes, I brought that from Ghana. I tell you, this is why this, yeah, because, I mean, who can love Nigeria more than Ghanaians? Yes. And the fact that they still follow us today is an example of humility and love because we humiliated Ghanaians. And who did it? Is this same Buhari? Ghana was close. But you know the sad thing today, Ghanaians are part of Nigeria, most of them. Because we are so, you know, they can't stand us to know that thirty-four minutes away, we have resources and we can't take care of ourselves. If any one of you would get to Ghana today, you will cost out Nigerian leaders. They had an airport that does problems, you think that we are in Europe. Absolutely nice. They are starting to get their economy back on its feet. A lot of work needs to be done, but Ghana today is a better place than Nigeria. They had, uh, the blackout for two years, it was a big deal in Ghana. To the extent that the president of that which is blackout happened, even though he fixed the problem, I haven't, they still did not vote for him. We have had blackouts since. It is the people who are putting their aid to Nigeria that will vote in every election. Yes. That is the, you know, the paradox of Nigeria. So lots of work. And now we, uh, we live there. Odhu, Odhu, or is it?
Sawa.
Yes. Uh, you, you talked about your parents and how you made it. If they put it, you would not have counted. That's, that's the truth. And it's interesting that Odhu was the biggest base we had in the election. Everybody used to ask for that she wears from Edo State. Because if you go to Edo State, every, in fact, you know, every variant of my name is like, "Come and show Orel," someone, same way, you know, see. They loved me and I loved them, you know? And support they had from Spain, Italy, everywhere, Germany. There was a lot of Africanese and, uh, Sierra Leone people. But you know what they did? First, a lot of people went home for the election. They postponed the election for six weeks. A lot of our people that went had to come back. So some people who had already decided they want to be polling in Nigeria, had already gathered their village parents, they had to leave because you don't have an extra week. And nobody was sure that they will hold the election the next weekend. So it's not how we tactically, you know? And that day, the first election was supposed to be my birthday, February sixteen. So they tactically changed it so that they won't give me a birthday gift. You know, uh, so what I'll say finally is that now we have a chance. Everything that will be viewed in terms of comment questions today were things that happened in the past. And to have history behind us to review what went wrong. Please, and I want to say this is very important. If you still see this as a show where we're going to become presidents, let's in Ghana, we have similar selves. We have to personalize this, all of us that are here. Take it as your project to, if you believe in this. Because imagine that we are able to run this country, win the presidency. Look at the pride that will be in your life, that you can go back home, you can take your children home, right? You can take them to Nigeria on vacation, as opposed to using Nigeria to scare them at home. Think about the value we can add even to Nigeria as a Dasporah. Just like they're talking about Greece. The Greeks in New York, in Europe, whenever it is time for them to rescue their country, they come together. What do you say can rescue their country is that they have a country they can rescue. Today, you don't have a country that you can even rescue from. I was, this is on the light after, I was watching a guy yesterday in Beni. He has been sending home money to build house. Only to, only to arrive there, there's no house. That is Nigeria for me. You have been sending money home, sending your emotions home to build Nigeria. When you arrive to Nigeria, there's no Nigeria. That's Nigeria for you. Right from the airport. Yes. Because we have the worst airport with due respect in the world. And I have traveled the world a little bit. I've been to a lot of poor world countries. Recently, I went to Mexico. I was thinking if I got to Mexico, I would go with my wallet. I thought Mexico is my biggest, based on what we read on the way. Mexico is like the US. Better than compared to, you know, US cities. When I was coming to Greece, I thought the ocean deep. You know, uh, I got to Greece here, I put in all the roads and I wrote, they were explaining, you know? I got to Italy, the only place that I went to that looks like Nigeria is Napoli. The dock there is like Lagos and Napoli people for each other. That's the only place, you know? And I'm, and I'm not trying to complain that Napoli have friends, I have lived there before. You know, I was very comfortable in Napoli, it was like ocean deep, I was just walking around.
You are feeling that too.
But everywhere else, amazing. Uh, so guys, I hope I was able to answer your questions. It's entirely, I spent like, you know, an hour ago. So again, thank you so much. And as somebody requested, would you come back? Absolutely. I would love to make this an annual event. In fact, I'm thinking about coming here for information. They said there's a town called the Salo. Yeah, yes. Uh, I want to come back and, uh, but before we go, please, I want you guys to give a round of applause for Prince. Please come and I can see you. Uh, and also, Toye, where's Toye? Yes. That's the end of our community here. You know, in the eighties and nineties, when they started Night from the Carrying Hotel, the tagline was, "Come, let's spoil you a little." These guys have almost destroyed me. On the damn fish, it's gonna be amazing. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you very much, everyone, for the time you spent with us. And, uh, you know, leaving a written, every business you have today behind to come here and be such a official president. Uh, I have to say, AAC.
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 Take it back.
Action.
Take it back.
Action.
With this, we'll come to the head of the meeting today. And, uh, I appreciate Mr. Guna to give us a great of thanks.
I want to thank each and every one of you. Uh, where's Miss Solile, she's in here. What you put to thank her? Because although I dropped the message, it's coming very late. And yet, I was going to tell her, I just said, "Okay, I will make sure I meet the commission so that I will see it." Why, because as you can see, this is a sample of Nigerians. It is not where we are in Greece. Yeah, a round of applause for them. For hosting us so at a so, so short notice. Uh, we, we are not up to five thousand. And in fact, those ones remaining now, while, you know, it's two thousand and thirteen. And when the two thousand and thirteen, when things are very rough in this country, a lot of people moved here to be far-right, uh, party. And it's troubling for us to make sure we restore everybody's rest, that's in fact, that we can be safe, comfortable to walk. I had Buhari in my conference in Brazil. Striking a team with the Germans, or this. Striking a team with the Germans, all of it. Set people home. So, with few people, so committed to the task, I put a phone them, I said, please, I want us to be building the teams. You have to relate this to you, to your people. Problem we face now is that Bahari, if you are watching the media, it's the same people who don't have war. And not knowing that, when you go to Nigeria, what you see every day, in fact, is worse than war. The actual war is several corners. Yes. And I told the government here, I told them, we are not, we might send those. It's most possible to leave our people here because as far as we are aware, we came to see refuge to the place. And they now decided that they are going to form a camp in one of the African countries, which I don't remember about, but I have a document. Well, no, not Egypt, it was, you know, another one as well. I will, I will remember. Anyway, one of the, so that all those African countries, since they are tripping on here, through Spain, Italy, and Turkey. The weaker, they are feeling up to take them for, and those that are from Africa, they wish them there. Then they will be giving them money to take care of them in the country there until they decide to own themselves. So, we started to, you know, pushing for meetings, meetings, how come I feel? But then you can remember the reason why you had to push for documents. Because it's when you have documents, you need to save. At the point, people, they don't believe that when they're running to change, they will do it. Because each person that is being sent home, there is an amount of money that is going to be given to the government. And in that too, we have to take them. At that time, when you get there, it's only that money you will not see. The those that went through I O, I also told them, I said, when you are going home, come, if you are worth it. Once you there home, anyone that asks you for the money that they give to you, have the airport. Take their number, and then tell them to give you their full name. Now, these 500 euros that they have given me to come home, eh, I will give it to you, I will give it, because we will try to then keep you and the rest of it. And here the person's name, I will give it to you. I will make sure the person uses it. And actually, the one who helped me to go and drop at the airport, that was. The woman, they said that the girl called back, I said, she was like, very much. They said, because now, the mom was there, your father. I said, yes, you, your mama? And she went home, she was able to have some money to start a life. And today, we still have quite enough people. And having that, a battle you cannot fight from house to wing. You can go and fight it from outside. There is no challenge that is being created by a man that cannot be defeated by another. So that's why I chose that you must address Nigerians and Nigerians. Although this is a small sample, when you come again this time, but I will be, I will get a bigger place and we will be putting a lot of congested things where you come. In order for us to put that intelligent head down and break something out of it. And what is it going to be? The fundamental to beat that challenge of that battle. I will beg you on behalf of Nigeria's experience, that you should not neglect your strength, your struggle. Because it is when you break that door, the border of that non-cultural process of integration. If he's all lawyer, he will drop him at the council. If he's lawyer, he will go for.
Go to Jalan.
And after that, we, we, nice to begin, if he's all lawyer, he will drop him. If he's lawyer, he will go for house. That system is broken. That's why now I'm afraid we cannot do without children. So I want it to be that the voice of the people as well are yours. And you must try, you must try to get there. They live to be hard, we will try to support. Uh, everywhere you feel that you are going to need somebody who cannot be intimidated, who does not need footstomach infrastructure, who handle. Yes, because it's this stomach infrastructure that you are facing now, that his brother who is even learning. You must see something in him. Okay, I want you to keep that. That's one thing, if somebody not just young, but who is concerned about Nigeria, can be in that asylum. And get up every day, or have a system of information, reaching him, and wherever there's a problem, he to go there. Only his appearance alone will do things in other areas. Because I look forward to Bahari's one. The first, the first time. People started cheering up again and say, what, this is interesting. Why? Because they think it's right. So, I'm not going to take much of the time because we have to take it. Please, just give them opportunity. It's true. And Nigeria, try to support your people, partners, and mentors, and by yourself. And you want to see me coming, you want my family, vote this mark in the lesson. Thank you.
Lord, we pray in the name of Jesus. I thank you for a thing like this. I will thank you because you are bringing a half from a goat. And he has come to stay.
Amen.
Lord, you will be with him.
Amen.
And you are ready to be with him.
Amen.
It is God.
Amen.
We thank you as we both will go with us.
Amen.
Protect and guide us.
Amen.
So your test will be done.
Amen.